Welcome, everyone. I want to call the meeting of the Linmar School Board, Board of Directors to order here at 5 o'clock. John, will you please determine a quorum?
Director Buckholz.
Here.
Director Foss.
Here.
Director Mansour.
Here.
Director Maury.
Here.
Director Thomas.
Here.
Director Walker.
Here.
President Laelain Castor.
I am here. To keep this meeting flowing today, I'm going to read each agenda item out loud by number, and then I'll ask for either a report or a motion so that we all stay on the same page together. Do I have a motion at this time for item number 200, adoption of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Britt and second by Madhat. Any discussion? If not, let's go ahead and have a vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. This is item number 300, our public hearing. At this time, I open the public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. I will call all those who have signed up in the order that they have signed up. Thank you. And just letting you know that at this time, although we had a public hearing, we do not have anyone who has signed up to speak to that. Is anybody else? If we have no one to speak to the public hearing on this matter, which is our budget, then the meeting is now closed to that public hearing. At this time, we have audience communication. I now open the microphone to audience communicators. Procedures will be the same as we would typically have. You have three minutes to discuss. We will listen attentively, but we will not respond back to your comments. And we just ask that all of this is done in a respectful manner. At this time, Anna, would you please come to the mic? Thank you very much.
Good evening, wonderful superintendent and district staff and board members. My name is Anna Kleimer. I'm a proud resident, parent, and a member of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. On Saturday, April 19th, our community witnessed a disturbing event, Nazis marching openly in downtown Marion. This isn't something distant or abstract. It happened here, in the heart of our city, and it sends a chilling message to all who call Marion home. When hate shows up on our streets and our policies or in our schools, we need leadership that meets the moment, not with vague words or rolled back commitments, but with clear courageous standing with dignity, equity, and protection for all our students and families. We appreciate those in our community who spoke out quickly and unequivocally against hate, who demonstrated what it looks like to live out values even when it's difficult. Our district has made promises to stand for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Those promises must remain unwavering, especially now when efforts to strip away protections for our transgender students, immigrant students, and other minoritized groups are on the rise, and when public education itself is being underfunded and attacked by organized hate groups, even prior board members. At our next Marion Alliance for Racial Equity Community Meetup, we will share the message of love conquers hate. We invite the district to join us, not just in statements, but in actions that show every student and every family that they are seen, valued, protected, and truly welcome in our schools. Additionally, as May Day approaches, a day that honors the dignity of workers, public servants, and the communities they serve, we urge you to remember strong public schools are the foundation of a strong democracy. Standing up for every student, educator, and family in our district is not optional, it is essential. Let us lead with courage. Let us teach our students by example that love, equity, and justice will always be stronger than hate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, we have no one else signed up to speak. So now we will move on to special recognitions. This is item number 501, our Lions Volunteer Award recipients. Da-da-da. I invite Carla up to have the best day of the year.
Yes. I would say this is one of my favorite times of the year. I get to announce all of our wonderful winners of our Lions Awards, and then Angela will be coming up here and sharing some information about her volunteer award winner. So I'm going to start with Barry.
I guess.
Okay. So, all right. So we have several different awards, and we do have some categories that have more than one winner. So I will start with Barry Buckholz. He has been awarded the Living Legend Award for Excellence in Leadership. He is Linmar Board Vice President, and he was nominated by Nathan Weir. Over Barry's many years of service to the Linmar community as a member of numerous committees on Linmar's foundation and serving several roles with the board, including Board Vice President and Board President, he has helped facilitate major initiatives, supported strategic planning, and advocated for the district at both local and state levels. Barry's leadership has helped shape a district that is forward-thinking, community-centered, and deeply committed to excellence. He remains grounded in the belief that every student deserves our world-class education and believes every staff member deserves the tools and support to provide it. Barry, thank you for guiding us with wisdom, leading with compassion, and reminding us all of the power of community-focused leadership. Congratulations, Barry. Okay, our next winner is John Christian. Come on down. Okay. All right. So John has been awarded the Innovator Award for Excellence in Positive Change. He is a principal at Excelsior Middle School, and he was nominated by Nicole Reddington. John's leadership is defined by a combination of vision, collaboration, and purpose. He creates solutions that are intentional, student-centered, and grounded in the values of Linmar. His work addresses real needs, bridges gaps, and improves experiences for students, staff, and families. He has created effective systems and empowered cultures, cultures of trust, of learning, of accountability, and of care. Through his innovative approach, John has made his building a model of positive change where students are better supported, staff are more united, and the entire community feels the pride of the ripple effect. John, you've helped shape a culture that others want to replicate, and in doing so, you've paved the way for even more progress ahead. Thank you for your bold ideas, your thoughtful leadership, and your tireless work to make Linmar better for all. Congratulations, John. All right. Next up, we have Erin Gorman. Erin has been given the award for Optimizer for Excellence in Teamwork. She's a school counselor at Excelsior Middle School, and she was nominated by Nicole Reddington. Erin is a consistent source of support, wisdom, positivity, and perspective. Whether she's guiding students through challenges, collaborating with staff on interventions, or helping solve problems across the building. Erin brings a team mindset to every interaction. She recognizes the unique strengths in others and finds ways to help each team member shine. Erin's work directly advances the mission of the district, not only through the services she provides to students, but also in the way she builds and sustains a positive collaborative culture across the school. She has made a significant impact not only within her counseling role, but in shaping a school climate where teamwork is more than a goal, it's a daily practice. Erin, you bring out the best in others, and that is the true heart of teamwork. Thank you for being the kind of teammate we all aspire to be, and for everything you do to make Linmar stronger. Congratulations, Erin. Next up, we have Kelsey. Kelsey has been awarded the Optimizer for Excellence in Teamwork. She's the high school athletic secretary and was nominated by Tanya Mo. Kelsey is the magician behind the scenes. She helps the entire athletic department stay on track and thriving. Kelsey takes time to understand and utilize each team member's strengths. She listens, problem solves, motivates, adapts, connects. And above all, she consistently reflects the mission and values of Linmar in every action and in every interaction. Her respect for others, her leadership by example, and her thoughtful communication style make her someone others instinctively trust and turn to. She doesn't just support Linmar athletics, she represents its spirit, standards, and commitment to excellence. Kelsey, you're a model of what it means to be a teammate, a leader, and a true contributor to the success of our students and staff. Thank you for all that you do and make Linmar stronger every day. Congratulations. All right. I don't believe Amanda Weaver is here tonight, but I'm going to read on her behalf anyway. She is the award of the Newcomer for Excellence in New Ideas. She is a Student Support Associate at Westfield Elementary and was nominated by Ashley Messlerly. Amanda has gone far beyond what is expected in her role. She brings heart, vision, and a deep sense of purpose to Westfield. She finds new, meaningful ways to reach students, build trust, and foster growth. Amanda embodies what this award is all about. She's innovative, committed, and passionate about making Linmar stronger every day. She has built genuine impactful relationships with students and staff. She has embraced our mission, lived out our values, and shown the kind of leadership that doesn't require a title, just heart, hard work, and a vision for something better. Amanda, thank you for the energy, thoughtfulness, and pride you bring to your work every day. You've already made a lasting difference, and we can't wait to see where your ideas and dedication take you and us next. We're so proud to have you at Linmar. Congratulations to Amanda. Matt Gasper. Matt has been awarded the Service for Excellence in Superior Performance. He is a science teacher at Excelsior Middle School, and he was nominated by Katrina Pankos. Over the last two decades, Matt has consistently demonstrated what it means to be a teacher, a mentor, a collaborator, and a role model. Whether he's in the classroom engaging students with meaningful and innovative science lessons or supporting his colleagues behind the scenes with district initiatives, Matt leaves by example in every sense of the word. His classroom is not only a space for learning, but a place where curiosity is nurtured and students are encouraged to think critically and independently. He has consistently gone above and beyond the scope of his role, not for accolades, but because he cares deeply about his students, his colleagues, and the mission of Linmar. He is a true embodiment of the values we strive to uphold: integrity, service, growth, and community. Thank you for everything you do, Matt, for showing up, standing out, and making Linmar a better place. Congratulations. Next up, we have Cheyenne Boyd. Lian, Cheyenne has been awarded the Lion Pride Award Going the Extra Mile. She's a preschool teacher at Echo Hill, and she was nominated by CJ McDonald. Cheyenne's impact stretches far beyond the four walls of her classroom. In her classroom, her preschoolers are greeted by a teacher who sees them, believes them, and nurtures them in every way. Beyond her classroom, she is known for her positivity, her can-do spirit, and her unwavering dedication helping both students and staff succeed. Whether she's planning engaging lessons, supporting colleagues, participating in building initiatives, or helping to solve a problem no one else even noticed yet, Cheyenne is always ready to step up and help. Cheyenne embodies the idea of going the extra mile. When there was a need in a student support services classroom, she stepped in with direct support, lesson planning, coaching, and support for classroom substitutes and associates. Cheyenne, you've made a lasting difference in the lives of your students and a meaningful contribution to the culture and spirit of Linmar. Congratulations. Next up is Brian Meyer. Brian has been awarded the Lion Pride Award Going the Extra Mile. He's a custodian at Hazel Point Intermediate School and was nominated by Terry Baines. If you ask anyone at Hazel Point what makes Brian special, you will hear the same things over and over. He's dependable, positive, humble, hardworking, and kind. Staff describe him as someone who makes their jobs easier, someone who listens, offers help, and brightens their day with a warm smile and an easygoing presence. His commitment to excellence has a ripple effect, boosting morale, strengthening teamwork, and quietly making every day a little bit better for everyone. He takes the time to connect with students with unique needs, inviting them to join him in learning essential life skills, dance parties. Do you want to?
No.
Okay. And encouragement to become the best versions of themselves. Brian Meyer is the kind of employee every school hopes for and the kind of person every community needs. Thank you for bringing your heart, pride, passion, and commitment to going the extra mile daily. Congratulations. All right. For all these wonderful award winners, we are going to have our official celebration on May 14th, starting at 5:30, so hopefully all of you can make it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Angela Burke, District Volunteer Coordinator, and I will follow up with a few volunteer awards as well. So I'm going to start by recognizing Bird Gangler. Bird is receiving the Above and Beyond Volunteer Award, which recognizes those who, through their leadership, that have significantly impacted our schools. Bird has served multiple years as a volunteer coordinator for both Westfield and Oak Ridge, even while serving as a junior associate and now as a secretary in one of our elementary schools. Even when faced with challenges, Bird always finds the positive in any situation and continues to shine rays of sunshine to provide that positive impact and serve others. She has most certainly gone above and beyond in not only her own volunteer efforts, but in her efforts to uplift others and continue to shine in their service at Linmar. So please join me in acknowledging Bird Gangler and her leadership within the district. Next, the Making a Difference Volunteer Award recognizes volunteers who have supported our students here at Linmar. Al Wu's service has both directly and indirectly impacted hundreds, possibly even thousands, of students here at Linmar. Al has already provided 370 hours of service for this school year at Wilkins, Boulder Peak, Excelsior, and the high school. As fellow volunteer Kathleen Tucker put it, "Her level of dedication is superhuman." Al steps in whenever and wherever there is a need. Our lunchrooms, classrooms, libraries, field trips, hallways, PTO events, and tummies, yes, I said tummies because she's always providing all of our volunteers with yummy snacks, have all been made better because of Al and her hard work and dedication. Please join me in congratulating Al, this year's Making a Difference Volunteer Award winner. Our Unsung Hero Volunteer Award recognizes those who have made an impact in our school community over multiple years. Derek Johnson is in his 16th year volunteering and has exceeded over 1,100 hours of volunteer service. Specifically, over the last 10 years, he's quite literally dedicated his blood, sweat, and tears serving as stable support for Linmar's High School Show Choir program. Trent Bugowitz commented, "Through all of Derek's hard work, he remains constantly kind, welcoming, and is an amazing ambassador to our district." I can assure you that if you congratulate and thank Derek for his efforts, his response is sure to be, "These kids are worth it." Please join me in celebrating Derek, our unsung hero volunteer award winner. Another round of applause for everybody as well.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all. And we're so thrilled with your dedication to the school district and to the students. Thank you very much. We are going to move on to item number 502, School Board Recognition Month. At this time, I introduce our beloved superintendent. She shares a proclamation in honor of our School Board Recognition Month. Ready, guys? Here it goes.
All right. Whereas the Iowa Association of School Boards has declared the month of May as School Board Appreciation Month in recognition of the dedicated service for all Iowa school board members in serving as a guiding light for student success, and whereas the members of the Linmar Community School District Board of Directors volunteer their time as publicly elected officials in representing all Linmar students, families, and staff, and whereas our school board members partnership with students, families, educators, and community to ensure our schools provide high-quality education and opportunities for every student, and whereas our school board members play a critical role in overseeing the budget, establishing policies, fostering a positive school culture, and making decisions that affect the community in an effort to inspire learning, unlock potential, and empower achievement. Therefore, be it proclaimed that as Superintendent of the Linmar Community School District, I proclaim the month of May as School Board Appreciation Month and extend a thank you to our seven board members and their dedication and service to the district and to the community. Thank you for your service.
We move on now to item number 503, National Teacher Appreciation Week. At this time, I have the honor of presenting the proclamation and recognition of National Teacher Appreciation Week, which is May 5th through the 9th. Whereas National Teacher Appreciation Week came into being through the dedication of Eleanor Roosevelt in 1953 in celebration and recognition of the accomplishments of educators, and whereas the teachers of the Linmar Community School District dedicate their time and talents to ensure our students develop into lifelong learners, and whereas our teachers work with students, families, administrators, coworkers, and community partners to inspire learning, unlock potential, and empower achievement, and whereas our teachers selflessly devote their time to developing curriculum, offering support in learning, as well as social and mental well-being, and empowering all students to reach their highest potential. Therefore, be it proclaimed that as the President of the Linmar Community School District Board of Directors, I proclaim the week of May 5th through the 9th, 2025, as National Teacher Appreciation Week and extend our thanks to all of our teachers for their time, dedication, and their knowledge in educating our students. Well, we're just going to keep on going. We have now item number 600. This is our mission moment.
I was driving to work the other day, and I saw one of the Cooper's Creek signs. And I just thought it was really cool to finally see the Venture Students Project come to full fruition. And now it's so official. I can see the Venture logo within the City of Marion logo. And it's just very cool to see all the hard work that our students put together to name that creek and map it and do all of the scientific mapping and all that. And then finally see the signs up in the community is kind of cool. So that's what I wanted to highlight.
The sign is on Tower Terrace, and it is kind of fun to just kind of... Tower Terrace, East Robben, which one?
There's three spots.
Three spots.
Yeah, I've seen it on Tower Terrace and Boyson.
Tower Terrace is the one I saw. It's fun. It's fun to see our hard work, but also to know that it comes with a story. So thank you to the Venture Students. Any other mission moments?
Just a shout out and congrats for all the students that were in the Spring Musical. I've heard nothing but wonderful, wonderful things about that from everybody that was able to attend. Unfortunately, I did not get to make it, but I have just heard so many community members raving about it, so.
I wanted to take a moment, I guess in the spirit of the recognizing volunteers. The morning of the Indian Creek Art Show, I had to pop in. And a flurry of volunteers were there setting up for the art show that night. There wasn't a single parking spot available in the front lot. And it's just like, it's moments like that where you're like, wow. Like, I mean, the whole "It Takes a Village" thing, like, there was so many people who came out, and they got all those artworks hung up on the lockers. And then by the time I drove past, you know, an hour or two later, they were all gone. And so just kind of... And so just kind of, I guess, piggybacking on the credit to our volunteers, they really do, I think, make a big, big difference in our schools, and we truly do appreciate all the time and effort and patience with all the hurdles and hiccups and, oh, we're going to change this, and now we're doing this, and they adapt and they do it with a positive attitude. So, thank you.
I got two real quick. I think last week was School Bus Driver Appreciation Week, right? And just thinking about the buses that we see driving past our house and just how appreciative I am of all of what they do. The other one I'll give real quick is the amount of communication, as a parent, that we get from the district, you know, it's always appreciated, and last week, more so than ever, as we had ISAS tests and the secretaries at the schools doing their best to send out reminders, timely reminders for parents on getting good sleep, getting a good meal. You know, it's that whole approach to just the education, and so as we think about, you know, what community we are and how we're one big family, all pulling for this, it's the students and it's always the support and the staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Go ahead.
So, yesterday, there were 21 students at Lindmar Class of 2025 were recognized as pride recipients, and I just wanted to give a quick shout out and congratulate them.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's a good night, isn't it? It's nice to have--
I just thought of one more that I wanted to share. I'm sorry.
For the wire.
I just, we're approaching graduation, and I know there's a lot of nerves and a lot of, you know, counting down the days and senior Sundays and everything, and I wanted to shout out to the kids who are graduating and might not know what they're going to do, right? Who are going to graduate and go directly into the workforce, or, you know, they're also graduating with a Kirkwood degree. And I know we have signing ceremonies and we have different recognitions of all these things, but, you know, if you're a senior and you're graduating and you might not feel like you have all the ropes or all the pieces of paper, like, that does not mean your graduation is any less special than anyone else's, and I am just as proud and we are just as proud as your accomplishments, as I hope your family is. And so, let's try to keep in mind that, you know, we're proud of all sorts of things, but if you're graduating and that's, you know, you have your diploma coming, good for you. Congratulations. You deserve it. You'll figure it out.
That's awesome, and it is what our goal is, right? Cross the finish line. So, thank you very much. Anyone else? We're going to go on now to item number 700, informational reports. I believe that Barry's going to give us a report on 701, the Marion City Council.
Very, very brief report. It didn't, not too much affected Lindmar, but one of the bigger pieces was the city made a decision to annex some land into the district, into the city, and it's actually district land, and it's where they're going to try to build a new aquatic center. So the new aquatic center will be on, quote, "our taxable property," if that is such a verbiage, but that's really all that they had. They were all into budgeting.
Thank you very much for attending that meeting. Item number 702, School Improvement Advisory Committee Report.
Yeah, so Cyac had a good meeting last week. Nathan kept us busy and on our toes and rotating stations. We talked a lot about, we had four stations that we rotated through to give feedback on. One of the stations was Title II funding. We just reviewed the allowable uses of Title II, what its current uses are, and then the committee talked about. Nathan gave us the whole long list of things that the funding could be used for. It's actually a really small pot of money, and currently we use it for para and associate pay and training, and the committee kind of, we went through all the different possibilities and kind of thought, yeah, that sounds like where we should just, that funding is being spent well. So, we didn't have any different recommendations there. We talked about Title I policy. Nathan and Carla Reese had us look at the current Title I policy and make some recommendations to send to the policy committee. So, there's a part of that that wants parent and community input, so we were able to do that. The committee talked about just really clarifying the emphasis that parent input is considered when putting together those Title I plans. So, that was, that'll be, all our notes will come to policy committee, and you guys can have fun with that. We looked at winter fast screening, and we had a discussion around that data, some questions that came up from the committee, the percentage of students in reading support intervention by school, just wanting to understand some of the disparities between certain buildings, concerns about proficiency rates, and how feeder schools might flow into that for Boulder Peak and Hazel Point. We did suggest collecting and analyzing cohort data, which the board is familiar with that request for cohort data, and the committee requested to see more clear benchmarks. So, what does it mean if it's aligning at 50% proficiency and 75% proficiency, and just better understanding and digging into that data. There was an emphasis from the committee put on evaluating instructional time allotted per building, making sure that there's equity between levels, so that teachers, no matter what, if they're teaching at the elementary level or the middle level or the high school level, that there's equity in their ability to evaluate and plan through their instructional time. And, let's see, the last group discussion, we looked at the parent communication letters. There was some new legislation passed last session about K-6 reading and that parents will now have the option to retain students who aren't reading in a proficiency. So there was some boilerplate, you know, standard state verbiage given in a letter, and they asked us to take a look at it. And the committee just provided some clarity and some, basically asked if we could make the letter sound more human and less robotic in form, like, so there was some revisions suggested, soften the tone. So, yeah, that was, it was really good. It was a busy, busy meeting, and the action steps or recommendations overall that the committee made was to incorporate growth measures in addition to overall proficiency when analyzing student achievement data, to look at developing that cohort-based data and just clarify and revise some parent communication for tone clarity and understanding. So, that's, like I said, it was a busy meeting, so lots to share there.
Thank you. Is there any other board members who attended that that would have anything to add? If not, thank you very much for your report. We have item number 703, Venture Academics Advisory Report.
Britt and I tag teamed, and both of these committee meetings were at the same time, so Britt took one and I took the other. The Venture meeting just happened this last week. We spent a lot of time talking about just the process of how projects come to be and some recommendations and thoughts and brainstorming around how to improve that process for community-based partnerships, and so got feedback and spent some time in teams talking about how teachers and community members and students can all work together more effectively to be able to develop projects and how those really tend to evolve over time and what ideas start as often end up being something very different, and sometimes they're much larger in scope, and sometimes they end up being much more refined in scope based on how the skillsets of the students and the ideas that come about as they're working on a project. So one of the things that they talked about was continuing to identify ways to get additional ideas from the community and maybe opening it up for some more opportunities for people to submit ideas in a more general sense, that students can then be able to play around with those ideas. We are up to 388 students enrolled in Venture, which is just amazing and exciting, and just love to see how that program continues to grow. We now have three strands that are becoming year-long strands. One of the big reasons for this is that there were several upperclassmen that had difficulty being part of the Venture program, just because of how the block scheduling works and some of the longer blocks, and upperclassmen who need very specific programs in order to graduate were not able to participate in Venture for that reason. So, they've made the civic strand, the creative writing strand, and the biomedical science strand all year-long offerings in order to make them less time each day, and that's allowing more young, all the way up to seniors, freshmen through seniors, to be able to participate that. And there are actually two groups of biomedical science, so really super excited to see the growth in that. About half of the students in Venture are freshmen and then are returning for future years. So, again, I expect that this will just continue to grow as we've got that many freshmen starting to hear about the program and being like, yep, I'm getting in and I'm getting excited. And then three changes or updates to the program. One is that they have, they're exploring a preview day for freshmen before registration so that they can kind of see what this is all about before they have to sign up for it and then figure out that, hey, this is a really cool thing, so they can check it out, explore it, and then decide, is this something I'd like to do or is it not? They have already implemented a process to get Venture Commitment information to counselors to help with the process for registration and sharing information with students that might be a better fit for that. And then they're also implementing and in the process of working on a student ambassador program to be able to help promote that out throughout the district. So lots of really exciting stuff happening, some new strands that they're exploring and working on community partnerships with, and can't wait to see where this program goes. Any questions?
Thank you for going. I hate missing those meetings, but yeah, I couldn't be in two places.
Yeah. Awesome. What an exciting time, and I'm glad that that building has also been modified to support all that public education and then in a very unique but also original space of Lindmar. Thank you, Melissa, for your report. We move on to item number 704, our legislative report.
All right. So, check in on the legislative timeline. The session is scheduled, and I'm saying that in quotes, to end May 2nd. All of the legislators that we have been in contact with do not think the session will end on May 2nd. It could be a couple weeks beyond that, unknown. So, just a quick check on that timeline. Pretty much all of the education-related bills have not been stagnant. There are some that are waiting for the governor's signature. There are some that are stalled in either one body or the other, and that includes, you know, the budget, that includes the cell phone bill, property tax. So, it is still unfortunately kind of a wait-and-see mode at the moment. I wish I had more concrete things to share with everyone, but that's my update. I can try to answer questions.
Anyone else have anything to say? Thank you very much for staying on top of our legislative items. At this time, we have our superintendent's report as item number 705.
Yeah. Good evening again, everyone. Some district honors and highlights. Congratulations to nine Lindmar High School student athletes that signed letters of intent on April 16th. We have another boys' basketball honor. We'd like to congratulate Payson Neder, Lindmar High School senior, for receiving the Iowa Bankers Association Student-Athlete Achievement Award in recognition of his excellence in the classroom, community, and on the court. We recognize a little bit ago our volunteers, but the week of April 14th through 18th was National Volunteer Week, and we extend a huge thanks to all of our volunteers and volunteer coordinators for what they do each and every day for us, and appreciate both Carla and Angela recognizing them, along with our Lion Awards winners tonight. Stories Alive. Thanks are extended to Lindmar School Foundation and Farmer State Bank for sponsoring Stories Alive guest author illustrator Troy Cummings during National Library Week, which is also April 14th through 18th. He visited all seven elementary schools and shared his stories and helped to build a love of reading in our students. Some more Venture Academics highlight to go along with our report that we just had. Kudos to our Venture Academics Earth Science students on their recent visit over to Bowman Woods Elementary to share nonfiction children's books that they wrote on earth science topics. Justin recognized earlier, Director Foss, our school bus drivers. We extend a special thank you to all the district's school bus drivers as we celebrated them on School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day on April 22nd. Thank you for your time and dedication to the district. Another group that we'd like to recognize is our administrative professionals. Thank you also goes out to that group as we celebrated them on April 23rd. Thank you for helping the district succeed with your time and talents. A little while ago, Midhot recognized our outstanding seniors. Yesterday, there is Pride, P-R-I-D-E, of Lindmar Recognition Ceremony on April 27th, 2025, and that award celebrates students who demonstrate perseverance, respect, integrity, determination, and empathy. Congratulations to the 21 who are recognized, and you can find a short write-up on each of these students on our district website. Two of our Lindmar seniors were recognized this weekend for their academic achievements. Congratulations to Jonathan Nithin and Malaya Bargova, who received the Iowa Governor's Scholar Award 2025 and Best of Class 2025 recognition for their academic achievement in their first seven semesters at our district. And then we also want to thank elected officials in our Capitol for hosting students from our Venture Academics program. Our students were taking a Venture Civic class trip, were able to visit the Capitol last week, and met with the governor during their trip. Just a few updates on facilities projects then with our performance venue. We have steel stairs at the north end of the auditorium in an area C will be installed the week of May 5th. East corridor steel installation is complete. Our elevator installation is complete until closer to substantial completion in the project. We have some window installation continuing throughout the month of April, which is a few more days here. Work on the high window framing is underway as well, and the wind and rain over the last couple weeks has kind of hampered that effort, but we're going to continue to persevere there, or they will. And sprinkler piping installation is ongoing for the next several weeks. Last week, we hosted our Educational Leadership Center ribbon-cutting and open house, so thanks to all of you here that attended, as well as to anyone that's listening that was able to attend that day. We're excited to be here and tell the story of what's happening over at the former LRC, now that we're calling that building the Academic Excellence Center. And then related to the high school indoor activities center, later in this meeting, we're asking for approval to set the public hearing for the issuance of save bonds. On the 24th of April, last week, we held conferences, so thank you to all the staff for your preparation, for your students for your hard work, and for our parents that attended that. And we've recognized our teachers coming up here with what President Lael Lancaster shared with the Teacher Appreciation Week. And next week, looking forward to Lindmar High School Senior Recognition Night, 7 o'clock at the high school.
Thank you for your report. Does anyone have any questions for our report? Well, thank you very much. We're therefore going to move on out of our reports, and we're going to move forward now to unfinished business. At this time, item number 801, Second Reading of Policy Recommendations. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the second reading of policy recommendations as presented in Exhibit 801.1. Second.
Second. We have a motion by Melissa, a second by Midhot. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote yes.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. We move on into new business. At this time, we have the approval of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. At this time, I introduce our CFO, Chief Financial Operating Officer, John Geldberth.
Thank you, President Lael Lancaster. Certified budget season is almost over here, so go through a presentation here and update you on what we're projecting for the FY '26 certified budget. So what's the purpose of our certified budget? Two things, is to establish our maximum tax rate and to establish an estimate of budget year expenditures for all funds. Just a quick overview here of our funding buckets. I think most of you have seen this many times, but I don't think I can go over this enough for you and for our public as well. So, our general fund, that is our largest fund, that is funded by property taxes, state aid, and miscellaneous-- That is funded by property taxes, state aid, and miscellaneous income. The largest expenditures out of there, right at about 80% is our salaries and benefits. It also pays for some materials, utilities. Our AEA flow-through dollars come out of our general fund. Management fund, that is 100% funded by property tax. That pays for our property insurance, liability insurance, workers' comp, early retirement packages. Our Pearl Fund, physical education, public education recreation levy is funded by property taxes. That is $1.35 that was voted in here at Linmar years ago, and that pays for rec spaces, playgrounds. It paid for part of our tennis courts. It paid for part of the track over at Oak Ridge. And it pays to keep our playgrounds up to date as well. Next is our Pebble Fund, physical plant and equipment levy. That has two components to it. It has a voter piece to it that's a $1.34 levy that was voted last year to be extended until 2035. And then it has a board approved, which is a 33 cent levy. That's through 2035 as well. That pays for building construction, upkeep, vehicles, a little bit of technology, some lease agreements. Next there is our Debt Service Fund, and that is property tax funded. And it also has some transfers, and I will get into that in just a second. But the property tax portion of that pays for our general obligation bonds, the principal and interest payments for those. So we levy enough out of that to cover our GO bond principal and interest payments. Next there is our SAVE or Secure Advanced Vision for Education Fund. The statewide penny tax is maybe what it's better known as. So it's a sales tax funded and also bond proceeds. So we can borrow against future, future revenue from that. Very similar to what we use our Pebble Fund for, capital projects, technology. And the Debt Service Fund, the reason why we say transfers is when we have to pay, make our revenue payments for our sales tax revenue bonds. We have to transfer that to our debt service to make those payments. So that's the transfers out of SAVE into debt service. Next is our Student Activity Fund. This is a self-funded, so it's any admissions that are charged for our student or co-curricular, excuse me, or extracurricular activities, fundraising, student dues. That makes up the revenue portion, and then it supports all of those activities. The Nutrition Fund, so just our, our lunchrooms, what's happening in there. So the meal sales, our lunch tickets, our, and then federal and state reimbursement really make up the revenues coming in, and then it pays for all things food service. So it buys our food, it pays our staff, it buys our materials for them to operate their kitchens. Lastly, these two are a little unique to Linmar, but we have two enterprise funds. We have our school store, the Roar Store, and we have our community pool. And really, those are self-sustaining, meaning all the revenue comes in, has to support the activities they have going on, and they have to maintain a positive balance. And they do, they do that. So in good shape there. All right. We've all heard that plenty of times. So what's FY '26 look like? So currently, 2% SSA growth and $5 per pupil. That's been passed by both chambers. Governor Reynolds has not signed that yet. So we're, I think, hopeful that she does sign that, but we don't know for certain. But with that, our property taxes or our proposed budgets have to be to the county auditor by April 30th. So here's our last chance to get this. So this is what we're going to have to go with. If there is legislative changes, we'll address that when it comes. But I think we're all fairly confident that this will get signed by the governor at the 2% and the $5 per pupil. So with that, what did we, what did we change this year? So our change this year overall is right about a tenth of a penny increase in our overall rate. If you remember, our proposed notice that went out into the mail, kind of our initial thought of where do we need to be without having a lot of information that we needed to make final decisions, was 1805. Now that we do know the 2% SSA and the $5 per pupil, we're comfortable keeping our, our rate flat. There is a few shifts here, so I'll talk about those a little bit. We do have a 19 cent increase in our general fund. And really, the driving factors for that is as we're looking at our financial health of our district, so our fund balance and our unspent balance. We're still in a growth mode there so that we can get those to the point that we're healthier than we are now. If you can remember, our solvency ratio was a bit under 7%. There's a board goal to be above 7. ISB recommendation is between 7 and 17, so we're still trying to grow that. But also trying to balance what our ask is to our taxpayers too. So at 1799, keeping that flat, we're, we're able to still get the growth that we need there to be a little more financially healthy. Few other changes, about a 5 cent increase in our management fund. Remember, that pays for the increased cost of our insurance and also pays for an early separation. We have our second of two payments for our early separation package from last year, still to pay for this year, so that's part of the reason for that increase. Our Pebbles stay the same, our Pearl stays the same. Our Debt Service decreases by about 24 cents. The reason for that is a couple of things. Our principal and interest payments ebb and flow a little bit. We have a, a debt schedule that we follow, so we know what we're going to be charged for those once those, when those bonds are issued. So those can change a little bit, principal payments can jump up and down, so that's part of it. The other part of it is, is we've been, been able to collect some interest payments because of what interest rates have done lately and the way we pay our debt service payments twice a year. So we do have some cash flow that sits in the bank for a significant time, and we do earn interest on that. So we had a little bit of a fund balance there because of that interest growth that we're using to buy down this portion of the levy a little bit this year. District cost per pupil, we talked about that. 2% and $5 brings our district cost per pupil to $7,988. That's up $162 from last year. So that's one piece of what our funding makes up. The second piece here is certified enrollment. So you can see there, the certified enrollment, we're down about 70, 73 students. From where we were last year, I think it's actually 72.4, but rounding there, 73 students. And then our students served, we're down roughly 97. Just to talk a little bit about budget and projections as we move forward. For, for this fiscal year, we had budgeted to be down 50 students, so we're down about an additional 24 from where we're budgeted. Going forward for the next several years, until we see that change, we are going to continue to budget being down 75 students. I think that's the conservative approach to be at. And that way, we can project out a number of years to understand that we're doing the things we need to do to be able to maintain a, not only financial health, but also to serve the district and the students that we have here. I didn't realize this slide was fancy. All right. Open enrollment trends. We have a net out of 289 students. That's an increase of 21 students from where we were at last year. So you can see the last three or four years here, we've kind of grown. We're kind of starting to steady off a little bit about what that net out is. We would really like to see that to come back together from where we are right now. All right. Now we'll kind of dump, jump in here to a little bit more fund by fund. So the general fund, just a breakdown of where that revenue is coming from. 57% from state, 33% from property taxes, federal at 2.8%. I think if you guys remember me talking about this the last couple of years, that was up to around 4, 4.5%. Why was that? Esser funds, they're gone. So that piece of the pie has shrunk a little bit down to just under 3%. And then other local revenue at about 7.5%. So expenditures. So this is what makes up the levy worksheet that we do have to submit to the auditors. If you guys followed that in the packet of information that was submitted. So these are the totals that we look at. $71 million on instruction, 4 on student support services, 6 on instructional staff support services, general administration about a million, school admin just over 6 million, business and central administration, 2.8 million, plant operation and maintenance, just over 9 million, student transportation at 3.2, and our AEA flow-through dollars at 2.78. You will notice that that's down due to the changes in the, in the law from what money's flow-through dollars now. We were up about $4 million, so we've shrunk from where we at there because of the change in the legislation. As you look at that as a graph and percentages, that's how that breaks out. Just under 70% of the general fund expenditures are instruction. All right. So the general fund levy, so the recommendation here is to increase that by 19 cents. And here's how that kind of breaks down. The state funding formula is to decrease by 10, or 10 cents. There's about 26 different line items that make up that 10 cents. So that's why I didn't get that specific, because some of them are like half a penny and whatnot. So just the way that that calculates out, that portion of it is to decrease by 10 cents. The instructional support levy, that'll decrease by 4 cents. And then our cash reserves, remember, that's our mechanism to fund a lot of the authority that we gain. So our, our special ed deficit, how do you fund that deficit? You can fund that by your cash reserve levy. Many of our SBRC items, that gives you the authority, but it doesn't give you the cash. So here's how you were able to get that cash to fund those things. And that's to increase by 33 cents. Management fund increased by 5. Continue to see large increases in our property and casualty insurance and our workers' compensation as well. And then again, to fund the second year of our early retirement package. Pebble, no changes here, still have the 33 cent board levy, $1.34 voter. That levy together is projected to generate about 4.75 million. The things we use that for, small capital projects, preventative or ongoing maintenance, safety, security, and some large equipment purchases. Pearl, again, continue the 13.5 cent voter-approved levy. Expected to generate about 300, just under 368,000. And I noticed I have a typo in there, so that should be 367875. I got an extra 7, apologize about that. Expenditures, capital projects such as playgrounds, some grounds maintenance, and then community education. Debt service decreased by 24 cents. That will generate an approximate $4.93 million to pay our general obligation bond debt, the principal and interest payments for those. So who, I didn't, man, I need to pay attention to these fancy slides. So there's the amounts that those levy rates will produce, and then who has that control? So the state controls 45%, the voter's just under 20, and the board at 36% of that overall tax levy. So looking at our trend, as you can see, in the last 15 years, we've really decreased our levy and then really kind of flattened out since there, 2023, a little less, but really since then, we've hovered right about just under, just under, or for a couple of years, just over that $18. So we really haven't been able to maintain our, our levy rate pretty flat over the last six years. All right. So what's this mean? I know we've had these comparisons in the initial mailer that comes out, but now we know what our levy rate is. I like to go through this again. I don't like the $100,000 residential house, because I don't think that fits. $200,000 maybe doesn't fit well either, but I think we're getting closer there than at the $100,000 level. So how do we figure this? We have your assessed valuation, times your rollback. Notice the rollback this year went up about 1.1%. That gives you what your rollback value is. From that, any, any homeowner can apply for a homestead credit. There's also a couple other credits. I think it's if you're over age 62, don't quote me on that number, but I believe it's over age 62, you can apply and be granted another credit. And then there's a military credit. So that less homestead credit, depending on who you are and what's your situation, and it could be more than that, $4,850. But nonetheless, the rollback value, less those credits, gives you your net taxable valuation. You take that times the levy rate and divide by 1,000, because that's 1799, 468 is per thousand dollars evaluation. And that will give you what your school tax portion payment is. So you will see there, in FY '25, that was roughly $1,580. Projecting for FY '26 is $1,619, or an increase of just over $39 for the year, or $3.27 per month. So the adoption of the certified budget, so this is just a copy of what does get turned in. We have our actual on the right-hand side of what was spent in '23, '24. Then we have the reestimated for '24, '25, coming up on the agenda. We are setting a public hearing for the May 12th meeting to have our budget amendment. There are some shifts in there, which is common, commonplace. I think everybody's used to seeing that. And then the projected budget for '25, '26. So the top half is resources, think of resources as revenues. And the bottom half are requirements, or what our expenses are projected to be for that. A couple things you'll see in there that are maybe a little bit, I'm going to say odd. I don't know if that's the word. But you can see, we have not projected any bonds this year. We do know potentially with the Indoor Activities Center that we may have that come. That's a, a large reason for a budget amendment, is because of construction projects. Down in the other expenditures, same thing. You'll see that that's down about $19 million, almost $20 million there. Same thing, the facilities improvements falls underneath that others expenditure. So as we get forward into the Indoor Activities Center and we have a better idea of the expenditures that will be needed during FY '26, if there are any in FY '26, we'll do an amendment to be able to correct that. So that's really the 24 million that you see less in the requirements and resources from the reestimated for '24, '25. That's really the large change in that. The other thing I guess I should note is the transfers out. You'll see that's down. Remember that we're paying off our current Pebble note. Our last payment is this year, so that's about $1.3 million that's changing there as well. So with that, really what the goal of, of the district, and I think the goal of the board, is to make sure that we're maximizing every dollar to ensure that we have a strong educational environment for all students. So I think with this budget, I think we accomplish what that goal is. Just a little comparison here from other local districts. And then Southeast Polk is always a good comparison, because they're pretty close to us in size and kind of the makeup of their district. They're a highly quote-unquote bedroomed community as well. So a couple things there, you can see, comparing our rates, change in rate, then there's the income cert tax. So Linmar doesn't use any income cert tax. There's some that's due. This information's kind of hard to find at this time, depending on what I can hunt down in their budget. So some of them, I can figure out what the percentage was, and some I could figure out how many income cert, cert tax dollars they were collecting. So that gives me kind of an estimated income cert tax equivalent. So that replaces what your property tax is. They're collecting that from the income of the residents of their district to kind of give you an apples-to-apples comparison of what those rates look like if they were to generate all property dot, if they're to generate their levy with all property taxes and no income cert tax. So that's second to bottom line is really what that's trying to show. And then last line there is just if you look at the taxable value per student in the district. We talk about property poor and we talk about property-rich districts. So that's kind of a driving factor to say, who's, who's property poor and who's property rich? And that can really affect your levy rate, so just that overall comparison there. With that, what questions does everybody have?
Hey, John, just a point for clarification here. You had mentioned that we, we didn't have any in the, in the budget for the bonds and a potential budget amendment. In case somebody misheard that, you're, you're not suggesting that we would then go ask for additional tax revenue to, to do that sort of budget amendment? That wouldn't be a surprise tax on bills later, right?
No. So our maximum tax rate is set with this, so there would be no additional tax. But we do have to stay in our, on the expense side. We have to stay within our certified budget expenses. So if we think we're going to exceed those, we have to amend our budget. So if we had a construction project that started, like the Indoor Activities Center, may or may not, we don't know the timing of that yet, which is why we didn't budget that now. When would that gets closer and we know that, yes, we are going to have, I'm just going to throw a rough number out there, if there's $10 million expenses, I don't have that budgeted in there now, so we would have to do an amendment to capture that. So we stay within our, our statute court, statutory requirements of not exceeding any one of those four expense categories.
Thank you.
Just on a side note, is there a deadline for that amendment? Or can we do an amendment anytime during the year now that we know when?
Yeah, great question. So yes, there's a 30-day waiting period for that amendment. So we want to make sure that we accomplish having that amendment in in the month of May so that there's a 30-day waiting period, we can still have our hearing if needed prior to the end of June 30th. But you could amend your budget as many times as you wanted to. So we could amend it earlier. Generally, you wait, because then you have the largest picture to know where you're really going to stand with your expenses. So that's why you see that we're setting that public hearing for May 12th. So we accomplished that in the month of May, but we have the largest piece of the picture painted that we can at that point.
Another quick question. In the slides, where you In the slides, where you're talking about, let's just say, the PEPAL and the Pearl funds, the total levy is expected to generate four point seven five million for the year, correct? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for your report. I'm gonna let you get back to your seat, because I think, believe that, oh, do you have one more? Laura, go for it.
Oh, sorry. Can you remind me again what the projected special ed deficit in general is going to do? Not exact, but last year it was about, it was six point eight million?
I think just over six, if I remember correctly. So what we've anticipated is the last two years or three years, we've grown by a million a year. So that's what we're projecting, is that we will grow by another million dollars in our special ed deficit.
Okay. And then on the district cost per pupil slide, that cost per pupil is based on the state calculation, right? Not necessarily the true cost for meeting all the special ed services, giving our kids everything they legally are required to have.
Correct, so that is for the regular program, so then we can start talking about categoricals and EOL funding and what that does and what that enrollment is for that. So that just, that cost per pupil is for your regular program budget.
Okay. And then just a last quick note, that I observed the, that if we were to overlay the historic levy rate chart on top of the enrollment trends chart, basically, the levy goes way down as our enrollment was going way up. And I can piece together logical reasons for that, but now, to have it hold steady, it's just been, those were some dynamic years and a lot of growth at that time. And then to see the stability is, I think I'm done now. The screen went dark. So just, thank you, great presentation.
That's a good comment on that, Laura. And also, at that time was when the SAVE, the one cent sales tax was being passed about the same time as we were cutting the levy. So that all paid right in there, because there's only three things you can do with that sales tax money, so that helped as well. But otherwise, they all tied together, yeah.
Thank you. Justin, you're at the, this end, did you have a comment that went, make sure, did not miss? And Laura, I apologize for interrupting you. And Britt, you have had your microphone ready to go. Is there a motion to approve the proposed budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six?
I will motion to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six as presented in exhibit nine oh one point two.
I'm gonna give it to Barry, because he's right next door to me. Here we go. This requires a roll call vote, may I have that, please?
Director Buckles?
Yes.
Director Foss?
Yes.
Director Mansour?
Yes.
Director Maury?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Director Walker?
Yes.
President Laelain Kester?
Yes. The motion carries.
I wanna make a quick comment too, John. We really appreciate you. We feel like we're in good hands with you, and we know that we're heading the right direction, so thank you very much.
I would second that. We've had a lot of deep discussions in finance audit, and your attention to detail is surpassed by very few people that, so.
Thank you.
Well done, again.
Wow, what a night of gratitude. This is great. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, John, for your report. At this time, we have item number nine oh two, approval to set a public hearing. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately thirty-one million dollars. School, infrastructure, sales, service, and use tax revenue bonds for use in the construction and furnishing of the new indoor activity center and renovation projects for five PM, Monday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, in the boardroom of the Education Leadership Center.
Second.
Ooh. Britt, I heard you got on that one, so let's go ahead. We have a motion by Barry, a second by Britt. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Wait one second, sorry. I couldn't get off.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Go for it.
That's all right. So just as a reminder, so we're not setting that we're gonna spend the money right now. We're just setting to have the public hearing to allow us to then fund it with that as we move forward with the project and make financial decisions and commitments at that point. So just as a reminder that we're not spending the money today or committing fully to spending the money. We're committing to having the money available should we continue to move forward.
Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? This requires a roll call vote.
Director Foss?
Yes.
Director Mansour?
Yes.
Director Maury?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Director Walker?
Yes.
Director Buckholz?
Yes.
President Laelain Kester?
Yes, therefore, it's unanimous, and the motion carries. At this time, we have item number nine oh three, approval of the open enrollment request. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the open enrollment requests as presented.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion by Laura and a second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? If not, let's go ahead and have a vote, please. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number nine oh four, the approval of fundraising request, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the fundraising request as presented in exhibit nine oh four point one.
Second.
We have a motion by Melissa, a second by Madhot. Is there any discussion? If not, may I have it all as in favor? Yes, any opposed? No, all right. The motion carries. Item number nine oh five, approval to set the public hearing.
Make a motion to set a public hearing at five PM on May twelfth in the boardroom of the Educational Leadership Center regarding the amended certified budget for fiscal year twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five.
I have a motion by Britt, a second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Without any discussion, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. At this time, we have item number one thousand, consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Madhot and second by Melissa. Is there any discussion?
We have three retirements.
Thank you very much for pointing those out. Would you go ahead and point those out for us today?
Yes, so we have Patsy Hoobler, Diane Irving, and Jan Hunting. Congratulations.
We are grateful for their service and excited for their retirement as it comes to this time. Thank you very much for all that, and is there any other discussion? If not, may I have a vote, please, to accept the consent agenda? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. All the way now, we move on to item one thousand one hundred, board calendar and communications. I'm gonna highlight some information, just keep your calendars out. We have a board visit this Thursday at eight-thirty at Westfield Elementary. We have senior recognition night in the Linmar Auditorium on May fifth, that's at seven o'clock. May twelfth, we will have our next board meeting, and it is also a closed session meeting at five-thirty. We have May fourteenth, the Lions Volunteer Award. We have also on May twen... That's my thought. I'm looking at this going, why, why? That's an old one. Board meeting on May twelfth is at five o'clock, that's a typo. Thank you for that clarification. You know, did you see me pause? I know. We have then also the Lions Award will be on May fourteenth at five-thirty. It is in here. Graduation will be May twenty-fifth at one o'clock. It is at the Alliant Powerhouse. And then we have May twenty-sixth, no school. June fourth, big drum roll, it is the last day of school for our students, followed by a teacher workday. I'm gonna go ahead and say, June fifth, we have a city council meeting on that day. Do I have anyone who will attend? Thank you, Barry. Might as well get ahead of the game, right? All right, thank you very much.
Can I just ask a quick question? Can we confirm if the Lions awards are at five or five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Okay.
It is official.
We had a calendar invite for five, and so I just wanted to confirm if that was just for us to show up early, or if it was?
So like, the reception starts at five? Okay, because yeah, my calendar says five o'clock as well.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a, there's a program, there's refreshments ahead of time at five o'clock, but the program starts at five-thirty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We got it from the source. Oof, all right, thank you for that clarification. Anything else? All right, I have board committees, we know that one. I'm ready for the big moment of adjournment.
We adjourn at six.
Oh, Barry got that one.
Second.
Yes, Laura, we have adjournment on the table by Laura, by Barry, and a second by Laura. All those in favor, please.
Can you confirm what time? Sorry.
Oh, thank you very much.
Six fourteen.
Six fourteen. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much.